Good afternoon. Want to call back into order the October 17, 2017 Union of the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors and certainly extend a welcome to all those who've joined us for the afternoon session. With that, we'll go ahead and get started. Call the roll. And then we've got a presentation that got put over from this morning, and then we have a number of items we're going to discuss this afternoon.
Good afternoon. Supervisors Frost, Kennedy, Peters, Serna, Natoli, and you have a quorum.
Okay. Phil, call the presentation item from this morning. We'll do that first.
Okay. Item 45, Presentation of Resolution Recognizing Gold Star Mothers and Their Families.
Okay. I'm gonna ask, I believe it's Arinda Pope and Karen Meredith to join me down at the dais. So I'm very pleased, certainly on behalf of this board, and certainly to be joined by, is it Arinda?
Arinda.
Arinda, and Karen. Okay. This afternoon, they're obviously representative of many, certainly mothers, but certainly parents and others who have had their young ones, certainly their children, serve in the military, and in many cases, those young men and women have been casualties, not all cases, but certainly this organization is one that has recognized throughout many, many years, this community and elsewhere, the service, certainly the courage in the service of our military service people, our men and women in the armed forces. And just a little bit belated, because I know on the last Sunday of each September, so, but then time we got the notice on this and so forth, there wasn't, we weren't able to get it scheduled on the agenda, but it's still appropriate, because I think it doesn't say that just on Sundays, last Sunday in September, we should recognize, I think each and every day, we ought to recognize our young people, certainly the sacrifice they make, and the mothers and others who hold them dear but keep their memory alive. And so we have a resolution that recognizes the Gold Star Mothers and their families, this organization's work, certainly since its founding in 1928, back in Washington DC, and obviously right to this very moment here in Sacramento, California, and the work that goes on each and every day to support the families, our armed forces, our men and women who serve throughout, certainly this country and throughout the world, and those that certainly have lost their loved ones in service to this country. I would just note that Gold Star Mothers certainly works to promote patriotism and love of country. They've generously extended their assistance to the descendants of Gold Star Mothers and their families. They advocate for peace, goodwill in America and throughout the world, and of course, work tirelessly to perpetuate the memory of those who gave the ultimate sacrifice in service to our nation. And each year, here in California, but certainly right here in Sacramento, I believe there's a run that starts in Elk Grove, if I'm not mistaken. It's a 150-mile run that goes over the course of three days, and I'd like to ask Karen or Arinda to talk more if they like about that. But basically, at each milepost, there is a remembrance that's left to call attention to the person who is being honored, that veteran of service, and they place an American flag at each milepost, and a personal biography of the fallen servicemember who's being paid homage at that point in time. And this is done each year, and I believe there are about 760 Californian servicemen and women who've died, and been a part of, obviously, the Gold Star Mothers and that organization's recognition of those particular veterans in their service. So today, it's my deep honor, on behalf of this board, on behalf of a very grateful county and the people that reside here in this county, to express our thanks and appreciation for the outstanding work and dedication of Gold Star Mothers and their families, and for their ongoing efforts in this community and throughout our state and nation, and throughout the world, to promote and bring meaning to and understanding to patriotism, and the personal courage and sacrifice that comes with serving armed forces, and certainly being a parent or loved one of those who serve and some who perish in that service. And so we extend our heartfelt thanks to each of you as representatives of the Gold Star Mothers here in the Sacramento region, but also to all the Gold Star Mothers here in our country. And acknowledge, a little bit past tense, but that September 25th was the day that we did that, but we look forward to September 25th of 2018, and again, recognize each and every day, the service of those who serve this country, but also the Gold Star Mothers and that organization. So Karen and Arinda, if you'd like to say a few words, and I know you both have had your children serve, and you may want to tell a little bit about the story as well, so.
My son is First Lieutenant Ken Ballard. He was killed on Memorial Day in 2004. He was my only child. He was a fourth-generation Army officer, and had been in Iraq for about a little bit more than a year, when he was killed in Najaf, Iraq. I joined American Gold Star Mothers, which is a veteran service organization, a couple of years later, and are working to have a chapter in Sacramento. Arinda is number four. We need five. And the California Run for the Fallen, which does take place, it would have been our third year this year. We had to cancel or postpone it this year because of the fires. They activated Travis Air Force Base, and we may be rescheduling it if we can, but it is a three-day event, but it's quite moving. It goes from Elk Grove down to Tracy, Tracy up to the Dixon Cemetery, the National Cemetery there. So if anybody can come out along the way, our website is ca-runforthefallen.org, and you can find the map, but to go out and, I traveled the whole 150 miles in my car, and to meet up with families who have come out to see their sons and daughters and their families being honored. So, and Arinda?
Thank you. My name's Arinda Pope, and my son Alex Varela was raised in Sacramento County. Orangeville and Citrus Heights schools he attended. Very bright young man. He decided he wanted to be part of something bigger, so he joined the Army. He was a private first class when he died in Baghdad in 2007. So right now, I'm putting my energies into the Gold Star Mothers and serving our veterans in that passion. Thank you.
We're a part of something bigger, just like our sons were. We turn our sorrow into service. But thank you very much. I really appreciate the attention to this, and sorry we didn't give you enough notice, but we will next year.
Our incoming chair, Susan Peters, will make sure we get it over, and we'll get a resolution, get it done timely.
Okay, great. Well, thank you so much.
We applaud you certainly in standing to applaud, but also in many ways, in our thoughts, and certainly in our prayers, and both of you shared a very personal story, obviously a very personal loss, but I think that with the effort that you put forth, that we'll continue to keep, you know, your sons in our memory, in our forefront, but also all those who serve and die and service our country. And I would just note that today, we will adjourn in memory of Alex Varela and Ken Ballard, adjourn our meeting in recognition, certainly of the two of you as mothers, Gold Star Mothers. And I would just give you one other opportunity. If you say you're looking for one additional Gold Star Mother, that would be, so you could get your chapter here, so if you have any information, there's a website people can go to, or whatever, or contact, so you may, out of this, be able to achieve that goal. So if you want to just put that on over the air, and just announce how people can get in contact with you.
My email is kensmom, K-E-N-S-M-O-M-K-M at gmail dot com, or my phone number is 650-814-3611, and I'm the president of the Department of Northern California American Gold Star Mothers. So we go from Monterey up to the border in Oregon border, and would love to have any other mothers that want to join us in serving veterans.
Great. Thanks, Karen. Thanks. Okay, we'll do a presentation here, and maybe a picture. Okay, again, thank you, Karen. Thank you, Arinda, and thank you to our audience for your applause as well, and recognition. Okay, Flo, next item, please.
Item 49 is the Arden Creek Town Center Linderman Appeal Fee Waiver Request.
Okay, we're gonna call items 49 and 50, I think, yeah, I think so.
Okay, and then item 50 is the Arden Creek Town Center Appeal of the Zoning Administrator's Approval of the Use Permit, Special Development Permit, and Design Review for a property located at the northeast corner of the Watten-Arden Way intersection in the Arden Arcade Community.
Okay, thanks. Well, we did have some late-breaking information on this, and I don't know whether you, Mr. Gill, or Ms. Whitman want to weigh in on.
Yeah, I was just gonna, what I mentioned right before we went to lunch break, is we're gonna ask for 49 and 50 to be continued. I think Flo, you had a new date and time?
So December 5th at 2:00 PM.
Okay. Let me just provide some explanation behind it. There was some information correspondence received that is important to the consideration. I don't know, Krista, you want to help out in this regard? But, and again, recognizing, obviously, Ms. Lindeman, and certainly many of you have written, and obviously taken your time to come down here this afternoon, but there has been correspondence, a good deal of correspondence received over the last few days, but I think in light of some of the information that was received, I think they need to further review that, and that's the reason why. Again, it was not any intention to have you folks come down here and then get, you know, told to come back another time, so I don't know if there's any other explanation you would want to offer. Okay, but it does pertain, it was information, again, submitted on behalf of those that expressed concerns about the project, and I think requires, obviously, the review of county staff and others, and again, it's all public information, but it was, certainly, I can just say, regarding some of the environmental reviews, somebody raised that in your correspondence as well, and so that is the reason for it. Again, and I apologize, certainly, for having folks come down here. The date you're suggesting, though, is December 5th?
December 5th.
And we have a time when we would do that?
At 2:00 PM.
At 2:00 PM, okay, so that would be time, and both items, obviously, the appeal itself, and the fee waiver is the first portion this board would consider, and then the project that is on appeal would be before us as well, and so these items would remain coupled, and we would have it for that afternoon. Again, I, with apologies, certainly, to all that've traveled here, again, the correspondence has been received, though, and I think it's an acknowledgement of that. So, and Ms. Lindeman, if, again, if you wish to address that, but just be sure that you're available on December 5th, since you are the current appellant on this, so that date would work?
Does that date work?
Okay, sure, Julie, that's fine. Okay. December 5th, right. And if there is a problem with that, we certainly will, Julie, work through my office, the chair's office, with the exec and planning department to do something. But again, if that seems like it's gonna work for everybody that's here, and others that would be, obviously, have been in attendance, I think we got the word out to some folks. If that, does that seem to work, then, okay?
You know, I can only say it tentatively works. All of my neighbors and community representatives who have taken a time to come here today, they or may not be able to do that there, and so do my best to see if that works, and I will let you know.
Okay, and you work directly with my office on that, certainly. Okay. All right, so we are, at this point, moving the item. It won't be heard before that, I can assure you, June 5th at 2:00 PM.
December 5th.
Yeah, June 5th, yes, right. December, not September, not June, December 5th, 2017, at 2:00 PM, so, okay, that would be a motion being ordered to do, to, based upon county executive.
In the motion.
Okay. All right, it's been moved to seconded. Please vote.
Unanimous vote.
Okay. All right. Thank you all for making the trip down. Okay, next item, please. Next item's 2:45.
We'll have to wait until 2:45.
Okay. All right, then we are going to recess briefly until 2:45, and be back in here at 2:45.
We have an off-agenda speaker.
Oh, we do, okay. Excuse me, we'll stay in session. We do have an off-agenda speaker? I don't.
Oh, I saw this. I'm assuming that's off-agenda. Do you have the gentleman at the top of the stairs?
Mr. Warren. David Warren.
Okay.
I guess we don't have a speaker sheet.
Oh, here it is, okay. It's stuck over here behind my stuff here, okay. We do. Great, thank you. Okay, so we do have an off-agenda speaker, so my apologies. David Warren, David, we did get your copies of documents for discussion, I've seen the correspondence, so. Good afternoon, David.
Thank you. This is my third time here. Since I was here, my wife was in the hospital again. I had to transport her. Spent four days and three nights at UC Davis. Again, she could not and would not be transported by Metro Fire. It's ridiculous. I've read the report that was submitted to you by the Department of Health and Human Services, and all it does is summarize the very things I told you back in July. I even provided you the correspondence and the summary. It's incredible that I cannot get this on the agenda. As you can see, on September 12th, I sent Mr. Gill an email and letter, which, as you recall, was not available to him on that date. On September 26th, I called Mr. Gill's office, never got a call back. On October 2nd, I sent a letter to Mr. Gill's office, excuse me, I received, instead of a call back from Mr. Gill's office, Mr. Medina from Health and Human Services called, and this is the very person who told me there's not a snowball's chance that he will change, that they will change their policy. In other words, the person called me, who I've been working with for two years, to tell me, "Why are you calling? Because I'm not gonna do anything." I then called, contacted Mr. Gill's office again, and after going through numerous hurdles, I contacted my supervisor's office, and I received a phone call, voicemail, because I happened to be in the basement at UC Davis in the radiology department, saying I'd be hearing from county council. County council sent me an email saying that they were canceling the hearing because this board does not have the authority to consider the review of the policy. It belonged to the state. The following Tuesday, I contacted that office, and last Friday, they sent me an email confirming the fact that this Board of Supervisors is the place to go to review the 50-50.12 policy, no place else, or the Superior Court. What is more troubling is that county council is deciding policy. Mr. Gill is deciding policy. He is taking matters off this calendar and preventing a hearing on a matter. I don't know that you're gonna vote the way I want you to, but I just want the opportunity to have someone come here and say, "It's not just because I know better than you." If you read the summary that was provided by Health Services, there is nothing in there at all about a specific intelligent waiver of the limitations set forth in the policy, and that's all I'm asking for. I'm not asking for any other change. Now, it isn't just me, it's all the people in Citrus Heights who happen to have, UC Davis physicians cannot go to UC Davis in an ambulance. There is, recently, a neighbor who is a Kaiser patient was transported to Mercy even though Kaiser Roseville is only 10 minutes away. This is a certain degree of insanity. Now, when I was a boy, I went to Cheder, and the rabbi said to me, "Children, this is bacon. Eat it." Now, we had all that time, been told two things by our children, by our parents. One, never eat pork, and always listen to the rabbi. You can imagine the conundrum. I learned that day, the rabbi's lesson was, "If you know it's wrong, don't do it," and this is wrong to prevent it from being set for hearing. I also learned another valuable lesson. When I was six years old, I lived in Chicago, in the Polish section of the community, and a seven-year-old boy took a two-by-four up to my arm and broke it. Long before Meyer Kahani, I learned, "Never again." Now, I do not want to involve myself in civil litigation. I do not want to go to court. I just want a hearing to protect my wife's life, and possibly mine, and other people situated in Citrus Heights. Now, I don't know what the result is. All I ask is that you please set it on the agenda. Have the people who expressed the conclusion that we know more than you, we know better than you, we are superior to you, to explain why. Not just the conclusion, but why. I'm not asking for anything more than that. Now, my mother's end of shiva is for the last meeting of this board in October. I can't be here, but there's no reason why this can't be set for the first meeting in November, which will allow me not only to be here and be prepared, but to get further interested people, seniors such as myself, and ARP to come down here and explain that we are not stupid. I'm not a gadfly. I'm reasonably intelligent. I'm just asking for a reasonable exception based on my ability to make a decision about my life. I can agree to terminate life support. I can agree not to accept doctor's advice, but I can't get in an ambulance to go to UC Davis, and I can't get my wife to do it either. Now, you will see, in order to avoid this, I thought, well, maybe I'll call, contact the Highway Patrol and see if they have an exception. So if I'm driving down the highway, and I see the lights in my rearview mirror, I can call the dispatcher and say, "I'm in an emergency." Go. You can see the letter I got. They said, "No, I have to stop." And more importantly, not only do I have to stop, they, the Highway Patrol officer decides whether there's an emergency situation, and then calls an ambulance, and there's no assurance I will be taken to UC Davis. Now, please, the first meeting in November, please set this on the agenda. Have the people who've made this decision come and explain it to you, because they sure won't explain it to me. They just say they're superior and know better than I do. Thank you.
Okay. Thanks, David. Yes, Supervisor Frost?
I'd like to speak to this. Mr. Warren is in my district, and I'm a little confused, because we have told him that this is regulated under the state law, and now they're telling, saying it's under the county, and so it seems like he's kind of caught in the middle, and he can't get an answer whether or not it's yes or no. And I don't think we can put it on the agenda unless we have some clarification and have followed up on it, and we have, you know, I guess what I'm asking for is, is there a way that we can get some clarification as to, is this regulated under the county? If it is, can we, can staff report back on, you know, does, are there other state laws that supersede the county? Are there, is there liability associated with this type of policy that could potentially impact public safety for, you know, in general? And are there other unintended consequences with insurance and the medical community, and are there some other solutions that the medical community could help provide by way of maybe transferring records over to, and connecting him with a physician in a close-by hospital that would have their background and have the resources that they seem to need? I guess, I don't think it's fair for us to just send him over, and then they send him back, and he's caught in the middle and can't get an answer, whether it's yes or no. He would like for us to look at this. So if it's in our purview, can we look at it, and can staff report back on those details?
I haven't been directly involved in this, but I did get an email from Robin as we were sitting here, indicating that the advice of our office continues to be that the board does not have jurisdiction based on the Supreme Court's review of the Emergency Medical Services Act. That's all I have for you.
I think Supervisor Frost. I think Supervisor Frost, the purview as per county council's review of this lays with the state, and the gentleman that provided the information to Mr. Warren, we're gonna talk to county council today, is that conversation with that individual, we should have that, and then his case that we have, they should know that's what it is, and wherever that lays within their structure, they should listen to that. Our recommendation based on what it was, that we don't have, based on county council authority, we don't have the purview up here to have that conversation, but we'll have the dialogue you suggested, we want to find who, and I think Mr. Warren had mentioned there's a Dr. Garza, is a person that seems to be the one that's, has that, and we can make a contact with him and have the conversation.
He's, he's out of town, I guess.
He's in Mexico, I think, is that what?
He's in Mexico.
Mexico, yeah. Well, we'll see who we can find in the structure and talk to the state people that said they don't have the purview.
I mean, my office tried to follow up on it, they talked to the EMS, EMS is not willing to jeopardize their licensing. We don't, you know, I don't know how to help him. If it's not under county purview, and it is state, then why is state handing it back down to us, and is there someone at the state that we can talk to to?
Let us.
To get him connected with who he needs to be connected with?
Yeah, we'll do that. I found out today that that's what they came back, let's find out.
Okay.
And our, and our office is willing to provide a memo in response to Mr. Warren as well.
Yeah, because we're gonna do that, that's what Robin had mentioned.
But not just, I'm not looking for just a memo of, it's not under our purview, I'm looking to figure out, how can we connect him with someone that can help him?
I think what you're asking is who in the state can Mr. Warren go to?
Yeah, I mean, whose responsibility is it, and let's get them to talk to him.
And I think what I can also do is also talk to our state lobbyists, too, to see who in that purview can help Mr. Warren with the issue he has.
Are we not, do we not have an emergency medical services plan, though, that, that is approved by this county? We have a director that has some pretty autonomous authority, as I recall, and it may emanate from Supreme Court decisions that I'm not aware of, I'm not the attorney in this matter, but whether we do or don't, you know, reading what response Mr. Warren got from the gentleman that he was directed, at least the department he was directed to go to, certainly leaves a lot of questions in my mind as I read that response, and, you know, David was kind of to, to, you know, give that to us, but, you know, there are local EMS agencies, I know there are a variety of issues that relate to ambulance service, both private and public, and I get all of that, but, you know, this, this is a specific request, you know, there is a committee that reviews it, that's a local committee, somebody somewhere along the line has to approve that plan, if it's not this board, who is it? And I think that's the question that's been posed here, and I think you've tried to assist in this regard, but to Ms. Frost's point, no more of this. It either is, you know, it's us, it's you, it's somebody else, it's nobody, but I think that, you know, that response needs to, to be, to be provided, and I know there was an item today, item 68 was the follow-on, it wasn't, you know, not on the agenda, it was a receive and file, but somebody did some workup behind that as well, which was good information, and hopefully you saw that, David, they.
Yes.
Yeah, that informs this discussion, but appropriately, somebody can make that call, I guess.
No, that's what we'll look, I mean, we were told it's the state, state thinks not them, we'll get in the middle of it and see who, where it is.
And if Roseville's doing something that is working, maybe we can look at what they're doing.
Right.
If Placer County is doing some, I don't know.
Again, I think.
He's describing something in Placer County.
No.
We have a very limited role in this, from what I'm being advised, it's more the state.
It's Metro Fire.
Yeah, state that does it, or Metro Fire, or other folks, but we'll see if we can find the appropriate person in the state, we'll work, have our lobbyists, see who we can get in there that can look into this.
May I have two more minutes?
Because remember, we have a, an unusual arrangement in Sacramento County, we're the only, one of the very few, if not the only county that has the fire department as the ambulance carrier, it's mostly in the state, private ambulances.
But even private ambulances won't, won't agree to transport differently, they're worried about their licensing.
Okay, David, you wanted to?
I just asked for two, two more minutes, and I'll be done, I promise.
Sure, okay.
As part of the response, I would request an explanation as to why an informed waiver of liability cannot be provided by the county. You do it all the time for all sorts of other things, to provide, so when my wife has my medical directive, or I have her medical directive, we sign it and say, we understand, you can kill us on the way there, but it's our best judgment. I have to believe that county council can draft an informed waiver of liability, they do it for other activities. Number two, okay? When the EMOC drafts its protocol that it submits to the state, why can't it put in a provision, not, not, they may not like my wording, that says, if there's some idiot who thinks he's smarter than you, he gets to sign an implied waiver of consent and gets to go where he wants? It's not that hard, even the, there's no medical liability, it's nothing. Believe me, before micro, I made a very good living, but I know what it means to sign a waiver of liability. The fire department won't be liable, and you need to understand, one last thing, they'll take you anywhere you want to go, except for a stroke or heart attack, and that's ridiculous. Thank you.
Okay, thanks David, I appreciate you being here, and so what is the direction taken out of this?
Direction taken is to find who in the state that Mr. Warren can talk to, and I think he's asking if we can draft a waiver of liability, I'm looking at county council on.
Yeah, we'll include that, I'm not working on this, but our office will include that in the memo as to whether that is an acceptable option.
And one last thing, I cannot return until the first, your next, your first meeting in November, so please don't schedule it for the last meeting in October.
We heard you, we won't do, we won't do it on Halloween, I promise.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thanks David. Okay, all right. That was off agenda, and we've got still 10 minutes, anything else we need to do, otherwise we'll take a brief recess, we'll return at 2:45.